Here. Commissioner Hoffman?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Ling?
Here.
Commissioner Agnew.
Present. Commissioner Bolshers is excused.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Steve, would you please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the Friday of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the election of officers. We have a chairperson, a vice chairperson, and a secretary. I'm willing to stay on as chairperson if that's desired by the rest of the board. Bob, are you willing to stay as vice chair?
Yes, I would.
So any nominations for chairperson, we'll start. Any other nominations for chair? I guess I'm the only nominee.
Uh, you should just do a voice vote.
Yeah. Uh, we'll do a voice vote for Alec Agnew as the chairperson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. And, uh, are there any other nominees for vice chair? Other than Bob? All those in favor of Bob Ling serving as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
And, we have any nominations for secretary?
I'd recommend Steve Riggs.
Steve Riggs?
Joanna, would you like to do it?
No, thank you.
Any other nominations or volunteers? I'll nominate Commissioner Hoffman as secretary. Are you opposed to that? Alright. All those in favor of Kevin Hoffman as secretary, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, so we have myself as the chairperson, Bob as the vice chair, and Kevin Hoffman as the secretary. We have the agenda, approval of the agenda. Take a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and secretary and discussion on the agenda. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Alright, public comment. Persons addressing the commission are asked to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the chair. Public members shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of five minutes. If you'd like to speak, please come to the podium.
Glenn Kowalski, Marshall Township. I guess first off, I'd like to welcome Dwayne and Steve to the planning commission. Thanks for agreeing to the appointments and I wish you well for the next three years. Um, planning commission bylaws, um, I've read through them. I do agree with, um, the markups that I think took place over the last close to a month. Um, I do have one recommendation, I guess I would make, uh, to the board. I believe a conflict of interest section is not strong enough, um, with the wording that's currently in there. I believe a section should be added and, and actually there wasn't an E, there was an F, which I think is a mistake. But I think E, uh, could read something like signs a non-disclosure agreement with any other body that has a direct or indirect connection to Marshall Township business or land use within its boundaries. I think that's critical as, as we've gone through the last few years, it's become glaringly obvious that that, uh, should be added. And I think in addition, and I didn't write this in my notes, but, um, I think the township has to keep a, should keep a copy of all NDAs. Uh, apparently, the NDA that Bob signed, uh, the township doesn't have a copy of that, so we don't know what's contained in that. Um, but I think that's critical. Uh, and then F, I think, F, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be part of, uh, that. Those bullet points, it has, it's its own statement. Uh, master plan, um, I guess just a comment, I believe that the review and reformulation of the master plan, land use future map should be of one of the highest priorities. Um, during the last update, it appears they may have been some planning commissioners that had information not available to others, other commissioners. No commissioner should be allowed to serve having signed an NDA that would not allow them to discuss purchased, intended purchase of land within Marshall Township or having a direct impact on Marshall Township business or jurisdiction. Um, I think the current future map should be looked at with fresh eyes uh, toward the protection of what most in Marshall hold dear, responsible land use for residential agriculture and conservation. In particular, attention should be paid to the planning of urbanization rather than just reacting to it. With a future map showing clear planned residential areas, no medium and high density, it would be a guide for future zoning requests made for such developments. So a landowner owning or purchasing land with an eye towards rezoning it for commercial subdivision or high medium density residential would have a guide to help them determine the likelihood of rezoning for that purpose. Just kind of closing, um, I think like the current zoning map, um, there are some errors in the future uh, map, use map, uh, or something went wrong in the process, but for example, Highfield Road, uh, is shown now as medium density. Those, those are individual homes on Highfield. There, there is no multi, uh, unit uh, residences there. So I have no idea why someone would want to see that medium density in a future land use map. Uh, again, that could be part of an NDA, I don't know. Um, the commercial zoning near I-94, uh, exit 110 should be reviewed as, I think there were some errors in that area um, that we came across during rezoning session. And again, the open space recreation areas, um, you know, they don't have a lot of importance if they're not going to be enforced. So potentially, um, I guess two things. One is, is possibly look at redefining that, um, as possibly an input to people who are, again, wanting to develop that property. And also as input to, uh, the city when we talk about, uh, PA 425 transfers.
And that's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Mick?
Uh, Mick Woods, Marshall Township. Happy New Year to everybody. Hope we all have a good year this year and welcome to the new commissioners. And, uh, my comments this evening are on the, what is supposed, what it says is the final draft in the packet agenda. The final draft for the bylaws and the rules and procedures. There are three versions in that packet. And every version in there has notations and corrections to it. So I don't understand how it could be a final draft. The darn things are, with all the corrections and lineouts and notations, they're hard to read and comprehend. I don't see how a vote, it's not a final draft to me with all those in it. I'm not sure how a vote could really be taken with those notations and corrections still in it. It's just difficult to determine what's, what it's actually saying. It'll be easy to understand if there was an actual final draft without all the notations and corrections in it. And my second comment is kind of agreeing with one of the things Glenn said is under conflict of interests, any commission member that signs an NDA should make it known to the commission and to the public, to the representatives, to the people of the township. There's no reason to hide it. There's no reason to keep it secret. You know, being transparent. You may not be able to tell us everything that's going on with that, but at least let us know that you have signed an NDA. You know, we've seen issues across the board with that this, this whole past year. And I just think it'd be helpful to include that in conflict of interest to have an NDA clause in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Acknowledgement, jury bonds.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I hope everybody's listening at the board meeting. We saw a lot of heads up there. Especially the ones around here, they wouldn't even turn and look at us. So I hope this year, you guys are actually listening and not, you know, we've been dealing with this for a long time. When I met Jeff for the first time, was the first meeting that, um, on the, uh, at the, um, for the solar group, the solar, um, rezoning, the, the, the solar group out there. That was the first meeting that we were at together. And so I'm glad he's, he's been quite involved all the way through since I've been going in. I'm sure glad that Jeff's stepping, stepping aboard here to take, um, take a shot at it.
Dwayne.
Dwayne, just sorry about that.
Just for the record.
I got trouble talking, so that's why I said, Jeff, there was a gentleman, Jeff, Jeff's slide, so. And so, and first I didn't talk very well about you, Steve, about having two guys next to you at the last meeting. I'm sure, but I'm sure glad you're, you're aboard and I hope you're, you're open and transparent to us. And that's what we've been asking for for the last two or two years, all the way through this whole damn process. Open and transparent, open and transparent. And I, and you're not open and transparent. This talks exactly what they were saying. You know stuff and you're not telling us. You represent us. And therefore we should know everything you know about what's going on with the mega site and the whole thing, the MEDA and other stuff. You get, you're, you're a part of a corporation and you represent us, but we don't know what's going on. So I just hope we, we would have much more open and transparency there. And back to the, back with, um, um, what, um, Glenn was talking about there about, we've been talking about that, um, conflict of interest for about, what, two years now? Two years, we've been bringing that up with meetings. First, there's one guy on this thing, one board that he's no longer here, but I can't, I can't believe that he didn't have a conflict of interest. Being on two sites, knowing everything about what's going on, purchasing property. And that needs to be reinforced heavily. That's what I, I believe in. Been believing in forever. Transparency. And ethics. And like you said, I, I, I went through the, um, that whole write-up there, the best I could do. I'm sure glad that they actually did revisit this thing. They actually probably improved our, our, a lot of, um, powers that we have in, in the ordinance or the, um, the new bylaws or whatever for it. I'm sure glad that some of those groups actually brought this, brought this to the head so that we could make these changes. And hopefully they, they do go through it unless they get voted down here tonight. So we don't know until we, we know, you know, how this is gonna get, um, um, brought up there. Maybe it'll just be a voice vote, which we, that's another thing. I hear a lot of talking, but we don't hear what's being actually said before, um, uh, uh, amendment was being voted on. You, you guys go quickly to, to a vote after a, um, a discussion, and there may be a lot of stuff that we want to talk about about that discussion you're trying to make. So we had no input into it without a debate. And it makes us mad that we, we cannot have any input and you go directly to a vote. And I can't surprise my five minutes, gotta be up. I'm glad we don't have any, uh, reinforcers here tonight. At least, at least you guys aren't inviting the, um, the sheriff here. So I'm glad you don't put that in, in the rules here that you don't have the enforcers here.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Here's your mic, please.
Would anyone else like to?
It's alright.
Is that working? Would anyone else like to speak? No. Go ahead.
Lee Rathwell, Sureskam, Marshall Township. Um, transparency, transparency, transparency. The conflict of interest portion of the bylaws, the NDAs. If you're signing them and not letting us know that you're on another team, you're not working for us anymore, we need to know that. Um, if you chose to be on the planning commission, then that means that you're working for Marshall Township, the people. So, um, I, I really think that really needs to be real strong. I don't think you should be able to, um, I think it's a true conflict of interest if you're signing NDAs and then working for somebody else and, um, so that, that portion bothers me. That needs to be stronger. Um, the future land use map. Maybe it needs to be a little more clear or something, but, um, and the other thing, if this is a final draft, I, I would like to see a final draft that had the corrections made or it was one complete draft, not three that you had to pick out and choose what, what's what. Um, just a complete real final draft, one that you would, if you were in school and you had to turn it in, that's what you would turn in. You wouldn't turn in a one with notes and corrections on it. You would turn in a final draft, the real thing. And I guess that's about it. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving here.
Would anyone else like to speak? Thank you. You have the minutes before you. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll make the motion. I did provide some amendments primarily typographical, um, spelling of Commissioner Bolshers and a few other items to Paul.
We have a motion in a second. Kevin? Alright, do we have a discussion on the minutes? No discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved?
What's the corrections? Bolshers already gave them all.
To be ready.
Yeah. I asked for a discussion and nobody said anything.
I think there was.
It wasn't correct, correct.
Uh, Commissioner Hoffman just asked what those corrections were.
Yeah, I should have asked before you, you moved ahead out.
I thought you had provided them earlier and they were incorporated.
Were they in the, was it in here?
No, it wasn't. I just brought it to Paul this evening. They were spelling up Commissioner Bolshers' name and a few other typographical items. Nothing of significant content to the, I don't think so.
No.
Didn't you correct? You gave us the corrected.
I gave you a corrected version.
Yeah, corrected version.
The corrected version for the G drive connect correction. And then these are just basically typos. And I gotta go back and look, um, at what section of the master plan that we were talking about. I thought it was chapter two and Joanna's put six on there. And that is in the, I believe I gave you a copy in the back of when we get into the back of the discussion on the master plan. There was a copy of what section we were gonna be working on and I thought it was two.
I thought it was two.
So, so those are the only real two things, I mean, the, the couple things that were, were noted on here. So there was nothing subs to that. Nothing removed or nothing, nothing added major.
You don't get to know what it is?
Just explain it.
Alright, moving on to old business. The Marshall Township PC bylaws, discussion and final draft. I think just to clear up any, there was a question on the final draft. This is not the final draft we're discussing and hopefully creating the final draft tonight is the goal. So for those of you that thought you were looking at the final draft, you were not.
Sheriff, I could also, once, my understanding is we're discussing the bylaws again tonight among the the board members, once this discussion is finalized, then that will be sent to the attorney for his review because there are certain legalities that have to be met on the bylaws. And so that will go to the attorney for approval and then it will come back for a final vote.
Correct.
Is there another hearing?
It's not a hearing.
No.
It'll be a, it'll still be an item on the agenda.
It'll be on the agenda, but there's tonight, tonight's the hearing, we're gonna, there were some questions that different members had that they wanted to discuss further. So we're gonna have a discussion on that. And then once a final copy, so to speak, has been agreed to, then it will go to the attorney, as I said, for the legal review. And then once he has done his due diligence, it will come back to the board.
So one, one point of order also, it, it was still, after you approve it, still has to go to the township board and the township board has to approve our bylaws.
Correct. That's the final step.
Right.
And that'll be at a regular township meeting.
Right.
So Joanna has, uh, volunteered to put together a little presentation on all the points that were discussed at the last meeting and meetings before that. Um, so Joanna, I'll give the floor to you.
Can everybody hear me? Yes, no, is it working? Now, can everybody hear me? Yes, okay. Well, uh, thank you, Commissioner. I, just a couple of items that I wanted to make mention from the comments at the podium. It is difficult, I know, to follow along when you're using the redline technique in Word. There is a way, if you had the Word document, to turn that on and off, but you were looking at a PDF version, so it was really hard to follow. So that, um, and as well as in the packet, I think there was the previous, uh, bylaws that we had as well as the township bylaws. So there was just a lot of material in there. So I appreciate, uh, Commissioner Agnew giving me the opportunity to kind of go through this. Again, this is a summary, high level, of the redline version. I do have a clean version here if anybody wants a copy of the draft with it cleaned up without all that redline stuff. So I do have that. So commissioners, uh, just draw your attention, I, I think, to the redline version. Um, hopefully you might have a clean version in front of you as well, but
I did, I did, well, I don't know if these
It's okay. We can, we can move along. Uh, so anyways, I do have the clean version that we can get copies of, anybody who wants it. Again, it's a draft. So, um, the reason, what problem are we trying to solve? I appreciate Alec assisting, um, with understanding. Initially, I think the planning commission began to look at the bylaws because the township board was gonna potentially be looking at the bylaws.
Can we turn this this way?
No, we're looking, now we can see us.
They have to see it.
Can you guys still hear me? Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so anyways, the township board was gonna update the bylaws. I could not locate specific agendas or minutes on it. I did try. Um, the township board last updated their minutes. Um, my understanding, based on the version we had in our packet, was in 2020. And us as the commission, we last updated them in 2019. So just a couple of items, um, I wanted to make reference to, this was also commented on at one of our last meetings, is consistency with the references to the commission, the Open Meetings Act and commissioner. Because sometimes we would say members, sometimes we would say commissioner. So I just cleaned that up throughout the document for consistency um, when referencing us as a planning commission. Uh, the other opening part is I did try to link to the actual acts, the public acts when we mentioned, say, the Enabling Act or the Michigan, um, Open Meetings Act. I actually linked to those, um, laws so that a person reading this could actually go right to that law um, without having to, you know, peruse and try to figure that out. Any questions on that opening, name and purpose, anything on that end? Okay, moving right along. Uh, under authority, uh, I know it's hard to read up on the screen, but anybody who looked at the redline, uh, my changes there or suggested changes in consideration were sentence clarification. And again, I already mentioned linking to the public acts were under section two authority. Moving right along, section three is membership. Uh, I did take a few liberties here, primarily typographical clarifications. But it mentioned, uh, the commission ordinance of May of 2017, and I feel stupid, but I'm not sure what that is. So I was gonna try to link to it if somebody could tell me what that was. I don't know. And then under membership, it didn't previously note anything about the joint planning commission. Um, and it didn't have anything about alternates. So I didn't know if we as a commission wanted to add anything on that in that section. So those are the two considerations there. Everybody following me on that one?
So should we discuss this as we go or do you want?
Oh, we really need a motion before we can open the discussion. So let her do her, yeah, do the presentation and then we'll do a, we'll have a motion.
So is everybody following me in session three? Okay, moving right along. Um, session four is, um, attendance. Uh, do I hear that right? Section four, attendance.
Yeah.
Second, section four, attendance, primarily typographical clarifications. And then I just switched the orders just for understanding. It, most of the content is still there, but I know it was kind of hard to follow with the redline. Training, uh, really typographical. Just a couple of considerations for under training is, um, again, it makes reference to the ordinance creating the commission, but I just want to have clarification as to what that is and I'm sorry Training, really typographical. Just a couple of considerations for under training is, again, it makes reference to the ordinance creating the commission, but I just want to have clarification as to what that is. And I'm sorry if I don't, if it's our ordinance, I'm not sure. And then, it says we are supposed to attend four hours per year of training. I was just curious, like, who's tracking that? How are we doing that? Is that, I assume we're all doing that? I don't know. So, just something to consider in that section.
Well, I, I, I'll, I'll go ahead. I'll just make a note.
Okay. Section Six is officers. I know that's really small print up there to read. So, in Item A, under officers, under selection, primarily typographical clarifications, I clarified the selection of the other memberships by commissioners. And I removed of the members present, as you have to be present to vote. So, I didn't really understand why that couldn't just be those that are here, because that's who has to vote. Under duties, just typographical clarifications there. Under tenure, I completely deleted that because it's already noted in Item A. If you look at Item A, it says, who shall serve for a 12-month period. And then, under tenure, it says the officers, and I don't know if that means, does any, I don't think that means chair, vice-chair maybe, I don't know. Then it says, the officers shall take office immediately following their election. They shall hold their office for a term of one year, or until their successors are elected and assume office. So, I didn't quite understand why we referenced 12 months and then we reference one year. And maybe there's something we want to do there, I don't know.
Is there something missing there that if somebody was to, didn't want the position anymore, that they were going to hold it until they found somebody, or is that...
It's usually under statute, you usually stay within the position until you can... So, I didn't understand it, so I deleted it. So, I did delete that. Our consideration in this one is you could retain the provision about take office immediately and just add it to Item A. Like, if there was some question that maybe, you know, when do I take office if somebody is midway through their term or something, you could just add that to Item A versus keeping that Section C. Okay, Section Seven, meetings. Under meeting notices, Item A, primarily typographical clarifications. I did make note that the notice shall be the reason for the meeting, the date, the time, and the location. In my mind, that should be for all meetings. We do it anyway. B, regular meetings. I took out the dates and times of all meetings shall be posted, the township hall entered posted on the website, because to me, that's already covered under meeting notices, which we do anyway. C, special meetings, that's just primarily typographical. D, quorum. This is interesting to me because it had on here in our minute, in our, excuse me, in our bylaws, that a quorum was five members. But yet, recently, we've had four members and we've conducted business. So, I adjusted this one, or made, this is all suggestions, suggested that it be a majority, a quorum is a majority, basically, of the commissioners present, right? Or of this body, I should say, excuse me, a majority of this body. So, again, totally up to this planning commission, but the fact remains that we conducted business with only four members present. Under Item E, public hearing, that pretty much deleted a lot of that section because the order of the public hearing is converted into, is covered in the order of business. So, I didn't, and the rules of order provisions, so I didn't know why it was needed to be here in public hearings as well. Continuing on, Section Seven, Item F, pretty much in this, I did some redlining to this. Again, I added that this is the general order of business, because frankly, the chair has the ability to adjust the agenda, like, if there's a presentation or anything along those lines, you can make adjustments to the agenda. So, that's pretty much the main focus of Item F. And Item G, voting, it clarifies voting and conflict of interest is directed to that provision. So, when it talks about conflict of interest, it's reverting folks back to that conflict of interest provision. So, and then, rules of order, I linked to the Roberts Rules of Order in that particular section. Consideration in this one is in the voting provision, is the chairperson voting last? Do we need to retain this? I don't, I don't know. Just, we can keep it in there, I just was asking. Alright, moving along to Section Seven, meetings continued. This is probably a big portion of it. And this is, I know some commissioners had comments on this too, and that is the public comment. The suggested revisions retains the five minutes. It acknowledges the receipt of public comments and the options for response in a positive statement instead of kind of sounding negative. So, that's the main focus of the public comments. The rules, Item J, for rules for conduct at meetings. Again, I took liberties of basically limiting or eliminating a lot of this section, because rather than threatening, the revision supports a respectful behavior by all present. I also did some research and in, it's already covered in many other laws, including the Open Meetings Act. It says, a person must not be excluded from a meeting otherwise open to the public, except for a breach of the peace actually committed at the meeting. And then, if we need to call, you know, the officers, they have the ability to address issues under the Michigan Penal Code for disturbance of lawful meaning. So, I just don't think we need to have anything further in that provision. And then, notice of decision. I took a little bit of liberties here. Paul might be able to weigh in on this. I eliminated the provision that basically says, you're gonna, we're gonna provide a written notice or copy of the draft approved meeting minutes, because there's already guidelines for that. And final decision of the planning commission shall be provided to the applicant upon request. I think we already do that. I don't know that it needs to be stipulated in the bylaws, but that was my reason there. Okay, Section Eight and Nine, this is really, again, more typographical. It clarified the minutes taker and roles. Commissioner Hoffman in that regard today. And then, how amendments are handled. Again, I don't think there's any main substance here, other than just some clarification. And then, the big one on the list, which we've heard some comments from the public as well today, and that is under conflict of interest, there is primarily typographical clarifications, added the grounds for removal, which we already had in there, just kind of adjusted it. And then, a consideration which would be interesting, that many of the public said the same thing, is a consideration could be, we could add a provision, letter A, too. And basically, it could say, the request for which the commission is asked to make a decision that involves a commissioner who signed a nondisclosure agreement, or some other language, acknowledging the fact that we're going to note that specific type of issue. And then, in closing, the commission needs to consider public comments. We need to consider any additional modifications to this draft. We could consider no changes to the draft and create a final form for the attorney review. And I missed a step, my apologies. The final step would then be to the township board. That's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Joanna. So, before we get a motion, Paul, you said you had...
I just got a clarification. So, I think, I think really what happened here, Joanna, is where it says the commission ordinance of May of 2017, that was our previous zoning ordinance. So, that just needs to be updated to the current zoning ordinance. And the wording on it's kind of weird, but it is, I'm, I'm sure, because the previous zoning ordinance was May of 2017. So, that just needs to be updated. Again, one of the things in the, when we talk a little bit about the joint planning commission, there is a set of rules underneath the joint planning commission that basically dictates how we appoint people to, how we appoint people from the planning commission to the joint planning commission. But if that's something you feel we need to add into the bylaws, I, I don't see any problems with it. I was just letting you know what the, what the procedure was and how it, how it became. And then, going back, when you talked a little bit about training, in, in, in other versions of this, there was a big discussion about shall and may. And part of that, part of that means, when you use the word shall, it requires you to do four hours worth of training. And so, there's a concern with, for example, if, let's say, a commissioner can't make some type of training in a, in a period of time, does that automatically void them from being on a planning commission because you put the word shall in there? So, that's another consideration you should think about, only in the regard that the trains that we do are usually, you know, they're, they're not, you don't see a training every month for a planning commission. You might see one or two trainings a year. And then, if it conflicts with your schedule, because typically, they are in the evening, and they would be in, maybe not, they're not going to be in Marshall. If we get lucky, they might be in Battle Creek or something, but you're going to have to go there. So, that's the consideration that you would think about and why, why the word shall is a pretty strong word. Going on, the quorum, one, and, and again, when we, when the planning commission started, we had, I believe, we had nine members. And so, over a period of time, one of the things that the Michigan Enabling Act allows us to do is it allows us to pare down the number of commissioners that we had. So, we pared down the number of commissioners to seven. And part of that is, is that, I mean, it's not fun sitting at that desk, I can tell you that. And so, it's tough to get nine people that are willing to sit up there and, and do that job. But it was decided by the board to go to seven. And then, at that particular point in time, four would be a quorum. And you must have a quorum to do any voting. So, if you, you can't use the word, the number of members present, it has to be a quorum.
So, your correction there is?
Yeah.
And, and just...
More accurate.
And just for clarification, the, the shall and the training part, that was, that was in there, right?
Yeah, no, I get it. And I, there was a big discussion about that. So, those are the only things that I had noted that I wanted to let you guys know. And then, this, this is, discussion's up to you guys now.
Well, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to consider these amended bylaw.
I'll make that motion.
Are we adding that one, excuse me, that conflict of interest? And is that going to be added in?
That's got to have been in a discussion. I think, we need a motion and a, to open a discussion, yeah.
Okay, I got it, sorry.
There's a, I made a motion, yes.
Joanna state your motion.
Sure, I can do that. I'll make a motion that we discuss the draft bylaws and rules of procedure to move to a final draft for review.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Joanna.
Alright, we have a motion from Joanna and seconded by Duane.
Use your mics, you guys, you guys are, use your mics.
Noted. Second, Duane, yes. Alright. Do we have any discussion on the bylaws as they are presented to us? Anyone like to start?
Well, I guess I would. I, I, the conflict of interest is a big thing for me, too, from sitting out in the, in the gallery before being up here. And I, I think it really needs to be strong. I, I, you know, I'm, this is my first meeting and I'm new to this, but I, and I don't know what I would suggest, but I think that's a big point for the people in the public. I think that, that, that's added a lot of, maybe distrust or skepticism. And I think that maybe we need to look at that and, and maybe, I don't know, put some stronger words in there, or maybe clarify it more, or, I don't know. I think that, I, I, I know that's a big thing for me.
So, my, my thought on that, the, I mean, the, the way it's written, covers, in my opinion, covers everything. There was a discussion about nondisclosure agreements. Having never signed one, I don't know what they would allow you to disclose, or disclose if you've signed one. I have no idea how they're written. I don't, I've never seen one, I've never read one, I've never been asked to sign one. So, I don't know if that, if by signing an NDA, can you disclose that you've signed that NDA? I don't know. It would probably be specific to whatever that NDA said. I mean, the bylaws, I guess it's, it's incumbent on the members to bring up any potential conflict of interest that they have. So, I guess if you've signed an NDA that would create a conflict of interest in one of these items, it's, it's up to our members or commissioners to, to bring that to our attention.
It was in the past.
So, and I know when that was looked at in the past, there was Jerry, please, when that was looked at in the past, the attorney reviewed it. I mean, the one incident that everybody's, this revolves around, the attorney reviewed it and declared, just determined there was not a conflict of interest.
Well, but it says reasonable appearance.
Correct.
It doesn't have to be a conflict of interest, it's just an appearance.
So, then that's a, that's where it's kind of a gray area. So, that's where we would...
So, is that something like, if someone thought there was an appearance, you bring it up to the board and you vote on it? Is that how that works?
That is what would hap, what should happen, if it would be, up to us to discuss that and have a vote and determine whether or not that person should, should sit out of that, discuss or vote.
How do you, how do you have a discussion around a nondisclosure agreement if you can't talk about what's in it?
Exactly. And that's the, that's the tricky part.
So, if you, if you put it in the, in here, doesn't mean that every time somebody signs a nondisclosure agreement, that they have a conflict of interest. And I, I would say...
You shouldn't vote.
Jerry, please, Jerry, please stop.
Not every time, but, but I think there are several times. And as commissioners, we should be able to bring those up. And if we, if we approach the attorney and the attorney said, no, we're good, can we, how, how do we discuss what's in it if legally we can't?
I mean, I, I think, you know, you could have, there could be an NDA signed by a member of the commission that has nothing to do with the property that, you know, that we're, that we're discussing. And then, there is no conflict, in my opinion, right? If the attorney reviews it, we could just say, the attorney has reviewed this and determine there is no conflict of interest. We don't have to state what specifically is in there, you know?
Sounds really good.
So, I think the reason I put this in here, too, is frankly, I'll just put the elephant in the room, is the fact that I didn't even know that anybody signed a nondisclosure agreement, to even ask the question, or to even know if it would or would not have potentially played a part in my decision-making. So, the way this reads, at least my suggestion, on the screen reads, you add a provision under Two A, that you're not, I don't care to know what's in the, in the nondisclosure agreement, because I think that's really the issue. Frankly, I would never sign one, but whatever. The bottom line is that if something that comes, a request comes before the commission for which you've signed a nondisclosure agreement, then you're going to say, I've signed a nondisclosure agreement, I don't need to know what's in it. That's my thought.
Chair.
Yes.
Okay, you can sign a nondisclosure agreement. Can you? If you'd quiet down, you could hear me, Jerry, because everybody else seems not to have a problem. So... Damn it. But he didn't bring it up at the beginning of the meeting, and that's when you have to make that request to the chair. If we're going to get specific, we're going to get specific. We, we talked, we talked long before that. The speed and everything, the, the sound of it, it was all brought up to forehand. Don't point me.
Don't point me.
What, I'm talking to you.
On a non-disclosure agreement.
Talk in the mic.
Jerry, please.
We're trying to tape it, for other people.
Okay, I'm talking about the non-disclosure agreement, okay?
He's refusing to talk in the mic.
Jerry, you're out of order.
Okay, I'm done. It's the same thing that happened last month. You try to explain to the people that are here, and certain individuals like to ramrod it and get difficult. And I'm not gonna put up with it. I am doing what I'm supposed to as a commissioner. Okay, thank you.
An NDA doesn't fit under B because it's not a business-
Can't hear, Kevin, Kevin. Thank you.
An NDA does not fit under B because it's not a business or financial interest. What if we put a fine in here? I, I think we're putting-
I can't hear you. Talk right, you gotta get it right up to your mouth.
Jerry, please.
That's what we were told last time, it's gotta be right there close.
Let me turn it on.
Good, thank you.
So, I guess I'm a little worried if we put it in here, it, it becomes hard-fasted, like we signed one, now is, you know, with the power, we're not supposed to listen to what they say, and, and I think that's, can be dangerous. Uh, I came here thinking that you have a need to add something, but I, I don't know how to add it. Where blanket covers every situation if you say an NDA was signed, does it, does it fit in other, some of these other categories where, um, you know, basically, it, it should just be up to the commissioner to, uh, as, as any other conflict, to say, hey, I did this, but whether, you need to trust your commissioners, that it either does or doesn't, is a conflict, just like you do with anything else.
Yeah.
I don't know what Alec does, if, if there's a conflict or not.
Please be quiet in the audience while we discuss this.
But my idea was to try to fit it in here somewhere, because the appearance of this one, everybody believes, I don't know what was in it, but everybody believes on this case, that there was a conflict there. If the attorney looks at it, how do we, how do we judge different on, on us? So that's my confusion. But I, I know what the community thinks, that's why I really wanna try to figure out a way to get this thing to work.
Well, I think, you know, it's one of those things, if, if any other conflict of interest that a member doesn't disclose, and like Dwayne said, I mean, there is a section that covers a reasonable appearance of a conflict of interest, um, as determined by the remaining commissioners, if, um, you know, i- if there were another, uh, conflict of interest that a member didn't disclose at a later date, then that would be, uh, you know, co- covered by the final section, um, you know, that would potentially be grounds for removal.
Right.
If the commission thought that they, they laid, at a later date, if something was discovered that was a, you know, undisclosed conflict of interest.
I guess the thing I would like to see is, is put in there as, if it comes up and you've signed a non-disclosure, to say, I've signed a non-disclosure, but I did this. So maybe it needs to go under one, or A two, and say, it needs to be recognized as one was signed, and then leave it there.
Yeah.
And then whatever happens in the meeting, the attorney either saw it and said, no, or, you know, yes, I need to step back. I, I don't, I don't know how much further we can go with a non-disclosure.
Yeah, but you can't let the damage be done.
Jerry.
You can't let the bit, damage be done.
Jerry, you're out of order, sit down, please.
You just let, you guys don't enforce it.
So, my question, since I knew, is if someone brings up a non-disclo- or, or brings up a, a conflict of interest question, and the board votes on it, then it goes to the lawyer? So the board makes the decision, not the lawyer, if, whether there is or not?
I suppose that, in that case, we, I mean, if we thought there was a potential, and we, we could postpone our decision, give the attorney time to review the non-disclosure, and, and give a, give an determination, yeah.
I didn't bring up non-disclosure.
Well, or anything, anything, yeah, okay, yeah, anything, right, yeah, yeah, I don't, yeah, I didn't mean to-
I wasn't talking about non-disclosure, I was just talking about, eh.
So I'll give you a little bit of an input on this. So you guys are given a packet, and, and you're given a packet typically a week in advance of anything that we discuss, any property or anything along that lines, and typically it's property. If there's a zoning ordinance change or something like that, but typically it would deal with property. So for example, Dwayne, if you had a interest in this piece of property, then at that particular point, when you see that come up on the agenda, then you should disclose that to me immediately. So that way I could send it to the, I can send it to the attorney, the attorney can make an opinion before we get to the meeting. And, and I, it's the same thing with an NDA, if someone signed an NDA and we're talking about a piece of property that they signed an NDA for, they, they should have to disclose that. And the reason, and, and typically it has to do with, um, monetary gain is really what a conflict of interest is, monetary gain.
No, 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 no.
Um, so, when you get your packet, if there's a problem, you gotta let me know, because then I can talk to you about it, we can send it to the attorney, then you know when you walk in the meeting, whether you have to recuse yourself. That's just my two cents on it, how you guys wanna put it in there is fine.
What about?
Okay, I've also seen, uh, if someone feels they have a conflict of interest, but they're not sure, they bring it up at the discussion at the meeting, and, okay, I feel because of these facts, on what we're discussing on this particular point, that I, I may have a conflict of interest. Then it's a discussion with the rest of the board members, and we have a vote. If the rest of the board members don't feel I have a conflict of interest, based on the information I've presented, then I can vote on it. So if, a conflict of interest, if one's brought up, it could come up at the time of a meeting, and there would be that discussion. And some people look at things a lot finer than other ones do, and that's why someone may think they have a conflict of interest, other ones don't think they do, and so then there's that discussion. Okay, now, and we had NDAs batted back and forth across the net for, I don't know how many months, okay? The NDA, okay, had no specific properties, it was just the situation that said, any information that was obtained at a board meeting could not be divulged to the public, okay? And, to go further, that NDA, I signed that when I was appointed to the board, and the chair had requested that I take the seat for the township. And I wasn't the first township member that had signed an NDA that came from the township board, and that was told.
That was your, when you were, when you were appointed by-
When I was appointed to the-
By Dave Bowser, to the, or the, uh, mate of board?
To the mate of board.
As the council representative.
Yeah. Dave, Dave could no longer, he was on it, he could no longer spend the time, 'cause it interfered with the farming and that. And so I was appointed, and I had to sign, I was requested to sign an NDA that that information could not be made public. And I'll even go a little bit further on that, and this is outside the NDA, but people had made the, the comments, well, you know everything that's going on, you know everything that's going on in Blue Oval? No, I didn't. The decisions that were made from the people on the mate of board that were transacting the decisions and the purchases and that, that wasn't discussed with the mate of board. That was that group that was specifically working on that. So-
You said right there. Damn it. Damn it.
I don't wanna have to ask you to leave, Jerry. I don't wanna have to ask you to leave.
This is-
This is a new year.
This freedom of speech sometime though.
It's not, now is not your time, your, you had your time, you'll have your time to end the meeting. We, we're, we're talking-
You guys don't wanna use the damn mic, go ahead, just do it.
Point of order. He is out of order.
Next outburst, Jerry, I'm gonna have to ask you to go. Okay?
Well, he's out, we're not using his mic.
Jerry, did you hear what I said?
He has respect.
Respect is a two-way street, Jerry. Yep. So I guess without specifically stating NDAs as a potential conflict of interest, I mean, it's covered not explicitly, right?
Sorry, I still struggle with it, I think we should have something in there, I don't, I don't need to know that you, what's in it. I just need to know that if you, something comes before the commission for which you need to make a decision, and you've signed an NDA, again, it has to be for something that comes before us, right?
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Then we need to know you signed an NDA, I don't need to know what's in it, I just need to know that you've signed an NDA. You can talk to the attorney and decide whether you do or don't have a conflict, but I think at least we need to be made known that you did.
Where, where would you, I, 'cause we've talked about this before, where would, where would you fit it in, I, that's, I'm just, I'm, I'm wor- I'm looking at that, I mean-
So if you look at, um, I'm, I'm sorry, I have a clean version here for anybody, if you look at the red line under conflict of interest, and letter A says, the request for which the commission is asked to make a decision. I would add a number two there that says, um, that involves a commissioner who signed a non-disclosure agreement. That's what I would add. I mean, you can make it stronger, I mean, we've heard some public comment, I'm just saying, I, I think this, we've heard the public comments, we've heard this over and over again, I think we need to hear the audience, hear, hear the, our citizens, and add something about the non-disclosure agreement.
What do we call any, our so- a commission member, member?
Commission, commissioner.
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 Remember what we changed, what we're going with here. So it could simply state that section two, or part two under section A, that involves a commissioner having signed an NDA. Okay.
Okay. So you're gonna lump, because a commissioner has signed an NDA, it automatically creates a conflict of interest? And you have no idea what the con- or the NDA is referencing?
So that would be, so that would be a, a point where, like any other conflict of interest, you would bring it up, and the board would discuss it. You know, 'cause I, 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 I see the point where that could be, an NDA just having signed it, and involving, you know, if it's in, you know, involves the property we're discussing, it, it could, you know, after a discussion, it would be determined by us, but it could be a appearance of a conflict of interest, and that, I think is, you know, I thi- I, I, I feel like that's enough, to at least have the discussion on, on that, at the, if that happens, if that, if that point comes up. 'Cause I agree with you, Bob, there, I, I was at a, a city council meeting a while back, and one of the, one of the council members brought up that he felt he had one, that there was a discussion, and the rest of the board determined there wasn't, and he was able to discuss and vote on the matter, so. Um, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to come prior to the meeting, but, you know, but it's, it's incumbent on, on the commissioners to, to bring it up to the rest of the commissioners.
I notice there's no way knowing.
Right, exactly.
I think the majority of the time it's gonna be handled, like Paul said before the meeting.
And that, and that certainly is a good way to do it, especially if we need an, if, if we feel like the attorney's opinion needs to be. Because if somebody brought it up and we had a discussion, and it got to the point where, well, we think we should have the attorney look at this first, then that postpones and prolongs our process, so.
It would be, it would be easier for them just to recuse themselves of that particular role, probably.
Yeah.
So, so the only other thing that I would add in here is, one of the things that you talked about in here is the plan, is the commission would have discussion of the conflict of interest, and do, should that be added into the language? Because what you're saying is, you're saying basically, this is pretty cut and dry, the way it's listed in here, is it says, you know, if you have these things.
Right.
So there's no discussion in there that the planning commission should discuss the, discuss the possible conflict of interest? Do you think it needs to be in there, or you don't? I'm just playing devil's advocate here.
Does the opening line say that, commissioner shall declare a potential conflict of interest and abstain, uh, commissioner, oh, nevermind, it doesn't, nope.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't give you an open-ended discussion.
So that could be modified to say, shall declare a potential conflict of interest, and abstain from participating in commission deliberation and voting following a commissioner discussion and vote, I, or something along those lines?
I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, you, you, I mean, if you guys feel comfortable-
The only, the only one that, the only one that does say that is the reasonable appearance of a conflict of interest.
Right.
And that's where I think an NDA would most likely fall, would be, it, it would be a reasonable appearance.
And on that one, you could ask the attorney for, forage to plug in there too.
Yeah.
I think you're fine with the way they're written. You know, I was just-
Yes, point of clarification, asking if there needs to be any further, um, explanation there.
If there should be, F.
Yeah.
The E, if there's anything there, it should be F, but I agree that that probably doesn't need a letter at the end, whatever we have, F G, G F. I think it's all one statement, as, as Glenn pointed out, failure of a commissioner's code, potential conflict of interest constitutes now a feebleness in office, grounds for termination, and that, I think that whole thing is just standalone.
It's just one statement.
It doesn't need a-
Yeah, sorry, thank you for, yeah, thanks for catching that, it is one statement in the clean version, so we're just, what you're saying is to remove the letter?
Yeah.
Completely, yeah, it just, it's the final, yeah. Yeah, I agree with that.
Is there any thought on, I'm gonna, we can move on to conflict of interest for a moment, just back to page one, what about the membership? We, um, I understand that we have specific bylaws with the joint planning commission, but I added that only 'cause it would've been nice, I didn't know that, you know, as commissioners, we may serve on that as well, so that membership was also so that we could recognize that that is a role that we play, does anybody have any issue with that membership piece?
As far as serving, yeah, I, you know, I think that might be a nice thing to have, just stated in there, that three members. Um, should we also go on to say that, and one-
Alternate?
Alternate member.
Yeah.
Is that the only one that has an alternate, right?
Yes.
And then, I think, what about what Paul brought up under training, each commissioner shall have attended?
Can I bank you up for a second?
Yeah.
So if we're gonna talk about membership, the other thing you wanna put in there is that, um, we also have a person that serves on the ZBA.
That's in there.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now, that doesn't have an alternate, right?
No, the, the ZBA has three members plus an alternate already.
Yes.
So.
Sorry.
So the training, oh, I was-
Uh, it's by section.
Yeah.
Fine.
So-
I recall that there was- I can't remember if it was the planning commission or township board that made reference to this training, uh, because after we got talking, you brought up that, you know, the timing and how many they have in a year's time, I thought it, I seem to think it went from shall to may, that we didn't, if somebody for good cause couldn't make that training, we didn't wanna penalize them. Uh, especially, uh, as you previously said, it's hard to get good folks to, to sit on the, the planning commission, and we kinda had to, I thought we had backed off on the, the hard and fast.
I, I just think that if you put shall in there, the problem is, is that somebody- if somebody doesn't make training in a year's time, then are we automatically going to look at removing them from the planning commission?
It does say, "Failure to meet the training requirement may result in the member not being considered for reappointment." So, the-
So maybe, maybe that covers it right there?
That's where it can-
Yeah, so it doesn't, it doesn't hold the board.
Okay.
Yeah, that part is made, but-
Okay.
Train, training varies quite a bit, I mean, they, they did a couple trainings that were, uh, during the day, it would be impossible for people that have, have a job, or have a full-time job, to be able to go to that training, even though that training was worth its weight in gold, I went to it. And, um, you know, I, I, I will try to make as much training available to you as possible, because I think it's important that, you know, it's like right now, um, there, there are gonna be some training sessions that are gonna be put up right now, and I'll try to get them out to you guys, but they're gonna be talking about the, the new law for alternative energy. And I think that we're all gonna have to come up to speed on that particular law, only in the regard that how does that, and, and I haven't been able to get an answer yet, how does that affect the projects that we already have in place? Are they gonna be able to, are they gonna be able to su- sidestep us, for example? For example, if, if one of the projects doesn't follow through on their, on what they, what they said they would do at, at the planning commission level, will we have the ability to go out there and, and, and pull the plug on them until they comply? So there's, there's some gray areas that really, so there's some training coming up, now, I'll shut up right there.
I received an email today on a call or a training on that very topic.
Yeah.
I don't know if you got that today too or not.
Uh, I, like I said, I'll send it out, and if you guys are interested in going to that, I, I would encourage you to go to it, and I mean, I think, I think that we have an invested interest in it.
How about if we put some wording in there? Shall, except for just cause, or just-
I think we've got it covered, Dwayne, where we're saying, shall, but then, training maybe-
Yeah. Failure to meet the returning current may result, so I mean, there is, there is some leeway there. The only other thing I was thinking was, a kinda along Dwayne's li, uh, line of thinking, I think, was, instead of shall, each member, each commissioner is encouraged to attend, something along those lines, but then that kinda doesn't have any, then, then the, you do that, and then the board doesn't have any, right, there, there's no real way to enforce-
Right.
If you, you're encouraged to do it. So I, I, I think we leave that as shall, 'cause it has the may later on, it doesn't mean immediate removal or anything like that, so.
Just to tack on with Paul, you were talking about the alternative energy and that, I don't think they, the state has even got all the rules around, and they know exactly what they're gonna do with everything, and so it's, it's gonna be a while till that all gets ironed out, and we see exactly where we're at, it's gonna-
Well, if the MTA does some training on it, and I think that, what I got was something from the MTA, and if the MTA does training on it, and it is a, some of their trainings are virtual trainings, where you can just log in and listen to what's going on, and you can interact, I think it's important, because the MTA will stay on top of this issue, and, uh, I just-
So training wise, yeah, the, the nice thing, a lot of these are now, if you register for training, you can't actually attend it, you get a link to watch on, on your own time, and I, 'cause I, I think the one you guys were talking about, which is, uh, in a couple weeks, on a Wednesday at like noon.
Can we sign up for those ourselves, or do we go through Paul?
Uh, you need to go through, through me.
Okay.
'Cause that way, if there's any costs involved, I can get them paid for.
Okay.
The nice thing about those virtual ones, a lot of them are free, you just have to enter. So I think we're good there, if everybody agreed with that. I, I don't have, I don't believe I had any other areas where I had any concerns about, the changes that are presented. Is there any other discussion?
We covered the forum, the number moving.
So, yeah. So I, okay, so yeah, that one, let's, uh, the quorum. If we just say quorum, that's a major, or, yeah, majority.
Majority of the appointed members-
Right.
Have to be present.
So the changes that I, I've tried to capture these, so we can get this cleaned up. I have, let me make sure I'm not skipping any, I have in conflict of interest, under section A, we've added a number two, that reads, "That involves a commissioner having signed an NDA." And then we will, if we do that, we'll have the attorney, we'll ask, the attorney specifically look at that, determine if that's a sufficient, or if we need to add language that would open a discussion on any potential conflict of interest, rather than just, you know, declaring and not participating. Um, if it, if it is a discussion at every instance. And then, further in that section, what was noted as F, and G, combine those into one statement, and then remove them as a subletter, that would just be the, the end of that section, and I believe that's, that's all we've really changed tonight, that I've got captured.
I just got-
If you have something else?
Yeah, I just got on page, um, I'm sorry, the under membership, we wanna-
Oh.
Make sure we link the proper zoning ordinance, um, of what that is, um,
Yeah.
It's here and it's in one other place without me.
Yeah, it says, uh-
And then, we wanna add the alternate.
The al, yep. Three commissioners shall be, the township representatives on the city of Marshall and township joint planning commission. In fact, I should say, three commissioners shall be representatives and one alternate?
Yes.
And then the other place, um, I have to go back to my notes in my slideshow, but there was other, another place where it referenced that same ordinance, and I think we just wanna clarify that there too, if I can find it here, I don't know where it is.
Yeah.
I think that one of my-
But it, it should probably read pursuant to the, um, Marshall Township zoning ordinance, I believe was what it should say. Not planning, not planning commission ordinance, well, and then update the date.
Well, and hopefully we, we have it on our website, you know, it's gonna get to.
Yeah, it's on the website.
Marshall Township.
Zoning ordinance.
Marshall Township zoning ordinance. Marshall Township zoning ordinance. Currently in effect.
Yeah, okay.
That way you don't have to change the date every time you change it.
I know it was somewhere else, but, um, I can't find it.
On the conflict of interest, when we said, uh, number two, commissioner has signed an NDA, that, that applies to the matter being discussed, correct?
That, but that is in, yes, shall declare, the, the first sentence, "Shall declare a potential conflict of interest and abstain from participating in commission deliberations and vote on a, on a request," when the request for which the commission is asked to make a decision involves a commissioner having signed it, so that's how that would read in, in summary, combining all the subsections and everything, so. So we had our discussion, which was, what the motion was, to discuss, wait, I wrote it down.
Discuss the final draft.
Yeah. Yeah. Motion to discuss and move to a final draft. So, if everyone feels like we've moved to a final draft, that we could forward, clean this up, send a non-redlined edition out to the attorney for review. I think we should do a roll call vote on this one, Paul?
Need a motion for that?
No, that was our motion already.
That was for discussion, right?
And move to a final draft, so I think that's what we're voting on, is this our final draft?
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sly?
Yes.
Commissioner Riggs?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Ling?
Yes.
And Commissioner Agnew Tuck?
Yes.
And Paul Scherz and Excuse.
So I will give you this, and, or, do you wanna?
I got it.
You got it, you got it, okay.
If you, if you just send me that, then I'll, I'll, I'll go through, um, like you say, the website, you should be able to link that right to the website.
And there's one other place I know it's in there, but yeah, okay.
Yeah, and we'd word search that and figure it out.
I'm happy to make this into a final draft form without the red line, with incorporating what Paul's helped the changes for us.
Okay, thank you. That feels good. Finally have that in, alright. Next old business, the master plan wellhead protection area, Paul?
So, so, um, I included quite a bit of information that, um, I've been going to these wellhead protection meetings. If you went through the information, you would, you would really see that ninety-seven percent, I would say, that's a good estimate, ninety pers, ninety-seven percent of the city's wellhead, where they draw water from, is in Marshall Township. There are some that are in, a little bit in the outside townships, but a majority of it lies in Marshall Township. So, this is gonna involve-
Go ahead, just-
Yep.
The wells are in the city of Marshall.
Yes, the wells are.
The, what's that?
And you'll go-
Yeah, yeah, it's the aquifer thing, yeah, the aquifer extends into-
Yes.
The township, it's not, they're not drawing water from the township, yeah, the walls are in the township.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to be clear.
Thank you for correcting, uh, so, wh- what, what needs to happen, and what the city would like us to do would be put a wellhead protection ordinance in place. What that basically would mean, for example, is you would have a difficult time in that area of putting a gas station in, for example, that had underground buried, buried tanks. There's certain uses that would not be allowed in that particular area. When we look at that particular area, the only area that I see where commercial development is gonna take place is that, um, I ninety-four and Old Twenty-seventh area, that, that could be potentially in commercial. Um, the other thing that, so when we write this ordinance, one of the things that we're gonna have to do is, we're gonna have to define what we're gonna allow, what we're not gonna allow into the, into the area. The other thing is that when, and I think it's a good idea, what I incorporated in here in the very back of it was, um, was what they call a, a, a chemical, a chemical questionnaire. And I think that that might be a good idea to try to include in all of our building permit applications from now on, only in the regard that, um, it's pretty straightforward. Um, with the, with the township having a considerable amount of, uh, farming, farming, they do use chemicals. And what that would do would give our fire department a heads-up of any chemicals that are stored on a property, so if there was a fire in that area, they would know that there's certain chemicals that are stored there. The other thing that, um, I was very encouraged about is that, um, Dave Bosser got ahold of me and said that he would like to set in on the wellhead protection as, as a farmer, so that we can go through this when we start working on this. So, we're, I, I will say that we're at our, we're, we're kind of at our infancy. They, they have some money, but they haven't got enough money. And the way I kinda look at this is that this is important for our township in general, but, and it benefits our residents, but more, it, it, it actually benefits the city better. So, I'm, I'm, have said to them that they should bear most of the costs of writing the ordinance and getting the ordinance in place, and doing, doing, um, and, and, and bearing the costs. So, this is kinda where we're at. I mean, and this is one of the things that we talked about in the, uh, in the master plan. How do we protect our groundwater? And so, this is kind of a first step towards that. The other thing is, is that I do have a link now, um, through the state of Michigan. Um, and what that link will do is it will tell us any wells that are, that have been tapped in the township. Um, one of the things that, uh, since, since I've been here, and I'm not tooting my own horn, but, um, when I get a building permit for, for a new, for a new home, I require them to give me their address record, because they have to apply to the county to get an address. That record has to go in there, they have to submit their well, where their well is located and, and the well. They also have to submit where their, where their, um, septic field is going in there, and they have to submit all those drawings. So those are all incorporated now into, into the BSNA system, so twenty years from now, somebody comes in, and, and it's not uncommon to have somebody come in and say, "Well, my well went dry." Where, do, do you have a record of where my wells at? And we don't. So typically, they have to go down, and they have to go to the county health department, and most of the time, they have problems down there, and they end up calling a well digger out there, and, and they'll end up finding, or they have problems with their septic. So, as we move forward with this, this is something that we're gonna protect our township with. The other thing is, is that we were discussing, uh, at one particular point in time, the state had grant money out there, so for example, if we were to find a wellhead that was not capped off, that we would, that, there would be funding available so that we can cap it off, because basically, a wellhead, and I, I'm probably preaching to the choir, but a wellhead is a, a straw right to our aquifer. If, if anybody dumped anything into that wellhead, it could possibly contaminate money, I mean, the, the groundwater. So you have to seal it off with a proper way of doing that. So, this is where I'm at.
So, we, so I'm clear, a wellhead protection ordinance is what this township needs, needs to pass as part of this program?
Correct.
Okay.
Do the other townships in this area have, you know, Paul, just as a general question?
Not as far as I know, I know that, uh, I know there's some other, I mean, I know Penfield has a wellhead protection area, um,
For their own wells.
For their own, but I-
For their own wells.
The townships surrounding Marshall.
The other townships that, like Convisley and Marigo.
And I'm not sure how, how heavily they're involved, if you look at the map on there that shows the area that it's at, it's, it's, I mean, it's just minute, really.
Mr. Ray, I'll tell.
Yes.
Um, I, I can certainly, or we can certainly take a look at MTA too, they have a lot of various ordinances, potentially, on their site, or, you know, other townships and see what they have. I frankly am more inclined to see if we can't come up with something, rather than relying on the city of Marshall, um, and also relate to that, um, with the master plan as well, so, I mean, if, if we need to create an ordinance, I think we need to take our time, but also see what maybe potentially is out there with that.
Well, I think Paul was saying, the city not create it, but provide funding, yeah.
Provide funding, and we'll, we'll, I mean, if they, I, I surely, I surely would not turn down the city of Marshall if they gave me a, a wellhead protection ordinance, but that surely will probably not be the final draft, and, and, you know, in most cases, e- even in this, in the state of Michigan- And, uh, you know, in most cases, e- even in this, in the state of Michigan, somebody writes the law and then the lawmakers take it and they, they, they move, they manipulate it the way that they wanna manipulate it. So, again, uh, um, if they wanna bear the cost of starting out by making the first step at, at, uh, proposing an ordinance, that's fine. But there'll be costs for us too, because you guys will have to discuss it. Our attorney will have to discuss it. We'll have to go through the ins and outs of it. But I, I think the stepping point is, is where do we get that first ordinance?
Is, does the, go ahead.
Um, I think we've got, um, a ready-made source to, to go to. Seeing how the, uh, our law firm is the lead law firm for MTA. I'm sure if we contacted Seth or Roxanne, they've probably seen some well, wellhead ordinances. And that would at least give us something to start with looking at, to see if that applied to our situation. And then we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel if it's already been, um, developed. And they sh- could give us some, uh, guidance on that. So, I think that's where it would make sense to start with.
Another point would be the, if the county has an ordinance, I don't know if they do, I, I feel like they probably don't. Um, I know, um, there's an ord- the city has an ordinance governing, uh, oh gosh, I can't remember what it is. Oh, but the, the county had an ordinance and the city's ordinance basically just references the county ordinance. That's all, they, all they needed to do was say, you know, you abide by the county ordinance. And I, I draw a blank as to what specifically it was, but in that, in that instance, the county had an ordinance that was sound, and so the city just, you know, their ordinance just references that. They have to abide by that ordinance. Um, that's an easy way to do it, if it's, if that's exists and it's something we, um, you know, we feel like it covers our, our needs also.
Outside the ordinance, I, I think there was a push at the county level to close a lot of, on the agricultural side anyways, probably twenty years ago, to close a lot of open wellheads.
Yeah, the conservation district. I know there's a lot of work in that, in that regard.
So, I don't know if there's still anybody there that would remember that, that would know if there's money left. If we find open wells, we can direct, as we get further into this process, we can direct people for monies to, to close that thing off.
Yeah, there were some funds available for that a long time.
So, Paul, you, you included that, that chemical inventory, and that would be something we could incorporate into new projects. But how would we go to existing properties already in, that aren't being developed or redeveloped?
I don't know. I think it would have to be, it would have to be probably volunteer.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could certainly send the inventory, the, the questionnaire to them, but it would be up to, you know, up to their voluntary.
Yep. I, I'm not sure that you could force somebody into doing that.
I wouldn't think so.
I think from what I've seen, a lot of it's more educational type pieces where you're educating folks about why this is important. And a lot of times, the county usually has taken lead on that, I think. Um, I'm more inclined to figure out, what does this all mean to us, right? We know we wanna preserve and, and, you know, have, protect our water resources, I suppose. But is, what does that mean to us in terms of an ordinance? And I think that's what we're, we have to try to figure out and work through maybe in our next meeting or something.
And honestly, I think, uh, you know, anything that we do to protect that particular wellhead protects a lot of our residents.
Right.
Wells also. I mean, there, there's a lot of, just looking at that map, there's a lot of properties in that, in that area. But creating our own ordinance would protect our entire township.
And again, this is, I, I, I just wanna reiterate this. The, the wellhead protection committee is only meeting quarterly right now. So, there's no real, I mean, they're going through this step by step. So, we're not at a point to where they're saying, hey, we're, we're ready to write an ordinance. We're ready to do these type of things. But one of the things that was discussed in the master plan, this was a topic. And I wanted you, I wanted the planning commission to know that there's, there's work being done on this. And I think that they, they're taking baby steps right now to make sure that they can cover all the costs. You know, to mention what Commissioner Hoffman said, yeah, twenty years ago, there was money available. There's, there's no money available for wellhead protection anymore or filling in those wells. Um, we know that we wanna get it there, and, and there was discussion of the educational component of it, of being able to go to the schools and talking to the kids. You know, one of the things that I, um, a long time ago, um, I used to go to meetings and I would ask people this question. How many are on well water? Well, probably everybody in here could raise their hands, you know? And so, the next question was, when's the last time we had your well checked? When I bought my house, twenty years ago. So, that's an important factor to let the public know.
Well, I think, I, I mean, I, I think at this point, we would probably need to see some, uh.
As soon as I get something, I, I made a note to talk to the attorney and see if he has some kind of a generic ordinance that we can take a look at.
Other townships, similar, you know, similar size, similar demographics and that, so. Moving on to new business, uh, twenty twenty-three planning year review. I think Paul's got something for us there.
So, if you go through, I broke it out month by month of what, kind of the highlight of what we did month for month. And I did that last year with a planning commission so they could take them. And it's just kind of a, an ongoing thing that has been done. So, if there's any questions.
Was there anything you wanted to specifically draw our attention to?
No, no, it's just, really what it is, is it's letting, it, it's kinda letting you know as planning commissioners that you had a busy year.
Share, Agnew Tuck, Commissioner Agnew Tuck, just a quick, is this something we're gonna put on our website?
Um, yes, uh, last year's is up there.
Yeah, I know we put last year, we put last year.
Yeah, and so we could put that up there also.
Okay, moving on to the, the appointment of Commissioner Johnson to the joint planning commission and appointing an alternate. Um, current members are Commissioner Ling, Commissioner Hoffman, Commissioner Gresley was the other member, and Commissioner Johnson was the alternate, the rules of the, uh, joint planning commission dictate that an alternate becomes a regular member. So, I don't know that we have to vote on it, um, but, so, I think you, it's already happened. But thank you for continuing to serve.
The only thing we have to do is, now we have to appoint.
We do need to appoint a new alternate, and given that Commissioners Sly and Riggs are new, and I've already stated that I feel like I'd have a conflict of interest as an employee of the city on almost every potential, uh, four twenty-five agreement. I don't wanna appoint Dave till we get a chance to talk to him, so I think we'll have to proportionally table the appointment of the alternate. So. Final public comment period. Persons addressing the commission are asked to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the chair. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of five minutes. If anyone wishes to speak, please approach the podium. Go ahead.
Yes, Speaker Dane was already decided a long time ago with, with the issue about, um, uh, freedom of speech and being able to hear. You know I get called out on that? Yeah, freedom of speech. You guys are, I don't want you, what you wanna call you guys, it's, we said, when you go back, talk about the chemical stuff. Riggs should know that, the, the state of Michigan handles that. But they have to report, farmers have to report every year what, what, how they store their, their chemicals, and it's provided to the fire department. So, why are you guys even talking about farming, uh, as a part of a building permit? It's already being handled by the Michigan rural, um, and agricultural division. So, you guys should know that, especially Riggs and, and Hoffman over there. Especially the, with the elevator out there, it, it's been in, in quite involved with it. And I actually did agree with Paul about when somebody has even a perception of conflict of interest, he should just sit down, because it doesn't look good if somebody thinks he, he's got a conflict of interest, and he goes on and, and discusses and votes. Because if, if, if just perception, like, um, Duane said, it, it's not good. We've said this all along. You've heard it and heard it and heard it from me the last two years, perception. I'm glad you finally listened to a lot of what I was saying out there, even though I, I miss, I misspoke. You did listen to me. That we are concerned about this issue. And for you guys to go ahead and just kinda push your foot around it, and just let them go ahead and discuss and vote without having it already cleared, that was, that was almost like you, you guys were, what you did last time. So, and you guys had quite a year, you're right. You guys really had quite a year of, um, 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 I don't know what you're gonna call it, this whole township. And these, these non-disclosures. God, if we'd known something was going on four years ago, we sure would've had a lot, a lot more say-so what went on. And this guy, Jesus, here, has had no respect. He knew all about it. Of course, Bob knew about it for the last four or five years. We asked about those trees being cut out there. Oh, they're just being cut because of safety reasons. Oh, just safety. We gotta get those trees down. So, we gotta go out and cut them down, run them up. Of course, that's how we funded it, with road money. But that's the answer. Again, ought is not our business. But you guys knew damn well what you guys are doing out there. That was long before that. Perception. This is all good. Take my time. Yeah, you guys made a, made a year, you're right. You all, you guys really made a year, especially with these closed-door meetings you guys had. You're not transparent, I mean. Damn. These meetings after meetings, they've gotta come to a stop, and you guys know something we don't know, and you try to get something through just to appease us. Throw, throw some, some of those more carrots. Did you follow your rules up there that Paul presented you? Are we, are we following the rules that he, of the order of protection for you? That was kind of. Paul's running the shot. But still, you didn't, you guys allowed him to talk at your meeting that one night. And you guys, should've put something about, um, if one of your own people get up and talk out of turn, are you gonna discipline him? That should be in the rules too. Not just, not just for us. It should be you guys too. You guys go on a line. You guys should be, um.
Thank you, Jerry.
Another thing is, should allow us to finish our thought, damn.
You have five minutes, thank you.
I didn't hear you.
You have fi- your five minutes is up, thank you.
Huh?
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak?
Uh, Glenn Kowalski, Martin Township. Um, just briefly, um, I think some points that you guys missed when you were talking about the NDAs. Um, you talk about conflict of interest. There's a legal definition of conflict of interest, and it misses a whole bunch of conflict, okay? It basically speaks to if you were to have financial gain, uh, based on that conflict. Okay, but let's use the example of being on the board of NADA, because that's really the crux of the matter. So, because we have copies of NADA's NDAs, because the city requires their council members to give the city a copy of those. So, when I FOIA'd them, they gave me copies. That's the first time we ever saw copies of those NDAs. You guys should do the same thing. Um, but specifically, what, what was, what was the issue? What was the conflict of interest? Well, let me ask you this, because Joanna touched on it. So, if you're a commissioner and you're sitting there in your seat, and one or two other commissioners, in this case, let's say two hypothetically, they know that land is being purchased, uh, and options are being exercised within Marshall Township, uh, toward the direction of creating an industrial park. And, and you don't know about it, and you're voting on an increase of future land use on a master plan that goes from seven hundred acres to twelve hundred acres to two thousand acres, which it did, right, Elliot? Then there's something wrong with that, right? Because you didn't know that, maybe. I don't know, maybe you did. He couldn't disclose it to you. Um, whoever else signed NDAs, Bob indicated that potentially, um, Dave Bossard signed an NDA, he doesn't remember. But they can't disclose that to you. They can't disclose it to Joanna. And you think that's okay? Now, the lawyers will tell you it's okay, right? The city attorney, I made a formal complaint. The city attorney said, no problem, because legally, there's no conflict of interest. He missed several other points, and he didn't send me a, a copy. He just spoke to the council. But that's the real issue that you missed tonight, is the conflict of interest doesn't have to be illegal. It doesn't have to be a legal definition. If you don't know some, in fact, actually, you, you speak to it here. If you, if someone is talking, if somebody knows something on the board and it's withholding it from you, and you're making a decision that requires that information, that's a conflict of interest. Maybe not legally, but ethically it is. Last comment I'll make is, um, unfortunately, I, I think you're relying too much on Paul's direction. It, for some reason, there was a note included in the packet. I, I found that, uh, to be insulting, um, that the chair of this commission would, would get that kind of direction from an employee. Um, as I discussed with other people, they had that similar feedback. Um, I do thank, uh, Commissioner Johnson for doing all the work, uh, that was brought up tonight on these bylaws because, uh, they were a real mess. Um, the final comment I'll make on wellhead protection, um, we shouldn't be doing it for the city. We should be doing it for ourselves. And that's what we should be looking out for, because at the end of the day, the city isn't gonna care about Marshall Township. They're gonna care about the water that they're bringing in for their use. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Rothbauer?
One of us.
Do you wanna, do you wanna hold your comments as Commissioner Johnson returns?
Get to it, man.
Okay.
Sorry, we're the party, man. That's all right.
Hey, Duane, regale us with a story, man.
What's that?
Regale us with a story.
You wanna, hey, what story would you like to hear? I'll tell you.
Just think something up, man.
Just think something up, man.
They don't talk, they didn't film up there.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, um, I have a few odds and ends here. One thing, um, the thing about using the microphones, um, most of you I can hear, but people who are facing the other direction, I had to get up and move so I could hear a little better, but, um, not all of you speak really loud, some of you I can hear from back there, but like, um, Commissioner Hoffman, I can't hear what he says, it's, it's just kind of a muffle. And so I have no idea what you're talking about until I hear the answers. So I don't know what the questions are, um. I hate using the microphone myself, I, I really don't like that. But I, I wish you guys would do it, um. I also, the, um, part about being able to recuse yourself, um, if somebody believes they have a conflict of interest, is it really up to other people to say, no, you don't? I, I have been to the city meetings and they do that. Someone believes in their heart, in their mind, that they have a conflict of interest, and then the commission votes that they don't. Well, that, how, uh, that really bothers me, how can you know what's in their heart? Somebody mentioned about the trees being cut down here. And I was told five days before the road was closed that it was for safety reasons and not because it was going to go to the mega mess. So there's a lack of trust and that was, that was, um, county. And, but it just seems like it keeps, like a waterfall of lack of trust. And it's really, it's really sad that, that you wouldn't want to disclose that you have a conflict. We would, we would trust you then. And there again, you know, I'm not saying that Paul's doing a bad job or anything, but it does seem like you listen to employees more than the residents. I've been to Marshall City meetings and their employees run the show. Um, the commissioners don't really, I don't think they have much to, to say about it, it's just whatever that employee thinks. So I think, uh, take control yourself and behave so that we can trust you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mick?
I'm Mick Woods, Marshall Township. I want to say first off, I do appreciate the diligence and the discussion you guys were having. You know, it, it lends a lot to me, I think to all of us, that we can listen to your thoughts and ideas and see the process at work. And, uh, thanks again, I appreciate that. Well, one question I have is, um, about the final draft. Will we be able to see that before it goes to the board for approval? Or you're going to leave it to, for us to bring our comments to the board?
We will vote on that before we send it to the board, so it will be on our agenda again.
Okay, once it, does the whole, sorry, we'll go back here again. And you guys were, uh, discussing a quorum for the meeting, that was a good discussion, I like that. So I looked up the definition, my eyes out there. And it says minimal number of officers and members of a committee or organization, usually a majority, must be present for valid transactions of business. So I don't know if it's something that you will want to designate in the bylaws. You know, it just says usually a majority, I think that's how everybody works, but you guys can discuss it yourself and see if you need to actually designate it based upon the total number of members you have going on right now.
Thank you. Is there any other one public wishing to speak? All right, close the public comments. We're next up, it's the zoning administrator's report, Paul.
Um, the only thing I have is I gave you information tonight. Um, I have been trying to work with, um, David Brown. Um, I believe in our last meeting, or the last meeting that we discussed this, which was in September, that the planning commission postponed a decision on this until January twenty-fourth. I've had several correspondence with Mr. Brown's attorney. Um, and one of the things that, the last discussion that I had with them is that they needed to provide the township with a, a sealed drawing. And that means that an architect would work on it, or a, um, architect, an engineer, or a landscape architect. Um, I asked them to have something to me on the twenty-second of December. And, um, that date went by, when I came into the office today. You have the packet that their attorney gave, gave you. Um, so I, I would like you to read it. Um, I'm going to send it to our attorney to have him review it. Um, I did review the zoning ordinance and he would be allowed to put in the height of fence that he wants to put in there. The only concerns that I would have is that, number one, one of the things that you're required is if you're going to, um, put a fence in there, it, it either has to be on a, a finished surface, or at the minimum, it would have, have some kind of gravel back there, which he's not indicating on there. So I, I want you to think about those things, um. He did miss the deadline, because I, normally I would re, the twenty-second was a deadline for me to review and go back to him and say, there's certain things that you have to do. Um, but again, that's your meeting on the twenty-fourth. Um, I will send you some stuff on that particular meeting, a couple of different options. Hopefully, I'll get the attorney to weigh in on what was given to me. Um, and then give you his opinion, because you guys will be opening that public hearing up on, on the twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, Commissioner comments? Kevin, do you have anything? Joanna?
Well, first of all, I want to, uh, welcome both Commissioners Sly and Riggs to the Planning Commission, looking forward to working with you. Uh, just a couple other comments, um, I wanted to make mention that, that, uh, if you haven't signed up for the Michigan Township Association information, I know that they have a lot of different, uh, programs that are out there, a lot of things to look into on their site. Uh, I just want to make mention of a couple of things, their recent newsletter also talked about all the legislation that was recently signed into law. One of the ones that I did not know or didn't pay attention to was that Public Act two thirty of twenty twenty-three. It actually, um, codifies that current policy to allow farmland that's enrolled in the Public Act one sixteen, which is that farmland preservation program, um, where that could also be used for commercial solar facilities, so I must have missed that at some point. Uh, the Climax Township, uh, Planning Commission, our neighbors to the west in Climax Township, there's a whole article, what their plant, Planning Commission is working on in terms of zoning, zoning ordinances related to solar and wind energy. Of course, as Paul already mentioned, there's a lot of conversation trying to figure out what that all is going to mean to us. I know MTA, um, and, and as well as, you know, our attorney firm is working closely to try to figure out what that all means. So I think that's going to be, uh, pretty strong discussion at some point, probably at this meeting. And then, um, the only other thing I want to make mention with, um, public comment is I, I see a lot of us as, as a planning commission, kind of a policymaking board, and there's issues that we have to address. But we do have to rely on our subject matter experts that are our employees as well. So I, you know, I know that from sometimes sitting in Paul's chair in my day job, that, you know, we do try to provide, our part of that role is to provide the, in this case, the planning commission with information so that we can make a good educated decision. So I just wanted to share that we do have to also, um, respectfully, uh, get feedback from our, uh, zoning administrator and others when it comes to our role and our information, so that's it.
Thank you. Bob?
No.
Duane? Steve?
Uh, no, hopefully you do a good job here.
And I, I too just wanted to welcome Duane and Steve to the commission, and I hope we have a, looking forward to a good year. So it's a new year and ready to, ready to meet it head on, I guess, so. And then we do have the, uh, the meeting on January twenty-fourth, um, for the, uh, issue at David Brown's auto collision. And, uh, then our next regular meeting will be February fifth. Take a motion to adjourn. A second?
Second.
Second, Steve, thank you, motion. Meeting adjourned.